Commissions to order. Welcome everyone that's here today. It's good to see we have some visitors. And at this time, I will ask Commissioner McCoy to lead us in the pledge and to have the invocation.
Let me all stand please.
I stand to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us all bow our heads.
Our Father, we come before you this morning once again saying thanks for another day. And thank you for all your blessings and your mercy and your grace. Lord, I ask that you give us the knowledge, the wisdom, and the patience to make the right decisions for our county and the citizens of this county. I also ask that you bless each and every one of us here, the ones on this board that are giving up their time, free time, to serve the citizens of this county. Lord, I ask that you touch those people in residence. Give the leaders of this country as well as over there some knowledge of how to resolve these issues without what's going on over there. I ask that you continue to bless our first responders and those that are out there fighting on the front line for us to have our freedom and to keep our freedom. This is my prayer. I ask you in your name, I pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Commissioner McCoy. I believe we have one addition to the agenda. Mr. Crap?
Yes, Chair. We have one item that we would like to have as a short discussion on is to verify what type of appraisal we would like to have conducted related to the Magnolia School Building, whether we want to have a fee-based appraisal or utilize the tax appraisal evaluation.
We'll make that item 12 and move 12 to 13. Close session will be 14 and the adjournment will be 15. All right. Very good. Okay, the first item on the agenda is a discussion. Hartz is requesting approval for certification assurances for FY 23. Mr. Blevins.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Board members. Thank you for allowing me to come before you and talk about the grant assurances. As you know, that is a grant that we apply for every year to operate Hartz. This is for fiscal year 2023. This is the last piece before it goes to its final application approval through DOT. In the agenda request, we specifically addressed a change. I think in November or October, excuse me, the board approved us for the grant for an amount of $730,000. However, once the application was processed, DOT had done some changes with their cost allocations and their indirect costs, and so they adjusted that. And so I wanted to mention that it has been adjusted down. So the amount was 730. It's now been adjusted to $719,000. And the total match is 90,057, and that's from 91,593. So I didn't want to mention that as we go forward. That'll be the amount they fund. The grant assurances are just like any other grants where the board says they'll assure that they'll abide by those particular pieces, and it's just a normal process. Is there any questions on that? It's pretty simple.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Blevins on this? I don't see any.
It's a pretty easy one. But is there any questions on Hartz while I'm up here?
I just want to say, keep up the good work over there, Hartz, a valuable asset to the citizens of this county.
Yes, ma'am.
And I want to see that we serve the citizens of this county. It's a vulnerable group that you're working with, the senior citizens. And what you all do do affect their livelihoods. So thank you. Thank you for the good work. Keep it up because you know if you're not, I'm gonna be calling you.
I welcome any call. We got good problem solvers over there, so.
Okay, thank you.
Just as a reminder, you know, we haven't filled up yet with our drivers. So if you do get a call, please let me know because we don't have enough drivers. I don't know what it is about people not working, but it's been tough. And we go out now and try to recruit in the community, asking our drivers to help us recruit. So because we want to get back to the pre-pandemic stage, you know, so know that that's going to happen. And to be fair, hopefully in the nearest future, I'll get an opportunity to kind of give you a brief on the whole system because some of you newer commissioners haven't had that briefing, and it's a very good one in how we pay for the system and those kind of things. So we're looking forward to that. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Blevins. Thank you, Ms. McCoy. With the permission of the board, we will put this on the consent agenda for next Monday. Madam Clerk? Okay, next item is Harnett County Library request to accept a grant of $40,000.
Good morning. So the library would like to request permission to accept a library services and technology grant from the state library. That's in the amount of $40,000. There are no matching funds required from the county. The intention of this grant is to help us bridge the digital divide in Harnett County and to help us meet the citizen demand for internet-capable devices. So these funds would be used to purchase Chromebooks that would be available for community use at each of the library branches in Harnett County. And then we would also use funds to outfit some of the spaces in the new library, the new main library in Lillington with audiovisual equipment that would allow us to offer virtual conferencing services and technology instruction programs to the public. Are there any questions?
Any questions about this grant? Especially with no matching funds, I think it's a good idea.
Right.
With the consent of the board, we will add this to the consent agenda. Madam Clerk, please add that to the consent agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We have a request from the Soil and Water Conservation for the new NCDAs Stream Flow Rehabilitation Assistance Program. Looks like we're talking about $2.3 million.
Yes, good morning. So the Soil and Water Conservation District Office, we are requesting permission to apply for the new North Carolina Department of Agriculture's Division of Soil and Water Conservation Stream Flow Rehabilitation Assistance Program. This is a competitive-based program across the state of North Carolina to assist in clearing streams of vegetative debris that has piled up over the years through storms and just natural falling of trees in heavily wooded areas and to our stream, impeding the flow, oftentimes causing flooding to lowland issues. Through citizen phone calls and evaluation of both Kenneth Creek and Niels Creek, we are asking for permission to apply for the $2,376,000 that you see there to clean out this creek. The northern part of Kenneth Creek especially has a lot of heavy debris areas, and we feel like cleaning these areas will restore the flow of water through these streams in order to limit some of the flooding in these low-lying areas, helping to protect property that lies along those areas as well. It is a reimbursement-based grant, however, there is no match that is required. I believe in your meeting packet that you were provided a map, so you can see a map. We're not asking for the whole entire stretch. We are asking for funding to cover nine miles of stream cleanup through those creek sections. The main thing that is different from the current funding that we have, that we're currently working on the Upper Little River, Lower Little River, and Anderson Creek, is that with this funding, because it is not disaster-related funding, we are going to be required to move the debris out of the 100-year floodplain. And so that either means it's going to have to be hauled off-site or it can be chipped as well and spread in a manner in which if it were to happen to be put back in the flow, that it would not cause an additional blockage. And so that is going to be the main difference from the current funding that we have.
And you said there's no matching required?
Yes, sir. There are no matching funds required. However, it is a reimbursement-based grant.
Okay. Anyone have any questions concerning this grant? Is the board in agreement to pursue moving forward with trying to obtain this grant? Madam Clerk, will you add that to the consent agenda?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Development Services, you can't add this to the consent agenda.
No, you can't. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Development Services has two cases that'll come before you this coming Monday night. The first case is a rezoning request that we received. The request is to rezone some property inside of a subdivision from commercial back to RA 20R. If you've had an opportunity to take a look at the actual staff report, you'll see that this is a little bit different situation in the fact that the lot is a larger lot and it has double frontage. So it has frontage over on Buffalo Lake Road, as well as there's an easement that runs down the side of it, as well as frontage on the inside of the actual subdivision. The subdivision's an older subdivision. It's a manufactured home, double-wide manufactured home subdivision. It's been out there for years. I've seen this before in my time here where they would reserve a lot usually in the corner like this and utilize it for commercial purposes. And I believe, I can't really be 100%, but I think that they came to us to rezone this to commercial. But they've got to a point where the business that's on the site no longer exists. They want to sell the property, and they realize, once they went through the process with the attorneys, that there's a restrictive covenant inside the subdivision that says they can't utilize it for commercial purposes. So they want to rezone the property back to RA 20R and utilize it inside the subdivision as a residential lot, which may be the best thing for it, given how it sets up inside the subdivision.
Is this the property that's right there next to Harold's? It's like a modular that sits back that they had for sale just a little bit ago?
Yep.
Okay.
That's it.
And the homeowner, how long have they owned this property? Or are they the recent purchasers?
I think they've owned it.
They've owned it for a while. The recent purchase fell through due to covenants, so that's why it had to go back.
I see. I see.
So they went through trying to sell it, and it got figured out through the closing process that they couldn't do it. So here we sit. No one showed up in opposition. County, I mean, the staff, we really don't have any issue with it. Obviously, we'd love to keep more commercial as we could, but in certain situations, it's probably a better situation that it go back to residential.
Any further questions, Mr. Locklear?
All right. Our second request is a text amendment request for the UDO. This is coming from us, Development Services. Basically, this is, if you look at it in like a three-pronged approach to some issues that we've been having with our fire flow and how we measure that. We've been working with Chris and the legal department to figure out, as well as the Fire Marshal's Office, to work on this text amendment. We've decided to kind of take it in three different phases, so to speak. This is the first phase in the fact that we do some cleanup things inside the, what we call the general fire hydrant requirements for residential subdivisions. And basically, we changed to Harnett Regional Water, some of the small things. The biggest thing is that we realized that we had no duration for the fire flow that we require where it's 500 gallons per minute. And some of you that maybe has been approached by developers and things like that about this issue has been slightly contentious here lately. We really wanted to put a duration in there. And so working with Fire Marshal and Public Utilities, we came up with no less than two hours of fire flow. So you have to have the 500 gallons per minute for at least two hours in order to have fire hydrants inside the subdivision. So that kind of puts some explanations on that. It also says that all hydrants must be installed to a public water main in order to have the hydrant inside the subdivision. And so it just really cleans up what we've, hadn't really had really any issues. We just think from a legal standpoint, it makes it clear for us, as well as the developers, and put in fire hydrants, fire protection for our subdivisions. That's phase one. So just understand, so that's what will be before you Monday. The second phase is, we had a little bit of this on this text amendment, but the planning board read it and felt like it was. Let me say this right. Do we have any questions in regards to that phase?
Okay. Is there a state requirement? Does the state, what's the state requirement for fire flow?
Fire flow goes a lot of times inside of towns and cities. We met with the state Fire Marshal's Office and as well as the previous manager, the interim manager, George. We met at a big roundtable discussion with those folks, and we kind of came to the fact that inside of towns and cities, it's usually 1,000 gallons per minute. And so working with the state Fire Marshal's Office and hearing what they had to say, 500 gallons per minute is really the absolute minimum that we could have and not be and not put the structures in jeopardy, or I should say the firemen in jeopardy whenever they show up. So I don't think that there's any official state code. We just have to go with what's the typical. Did I say that right?
Right. And also the time, so two hours is not a state standard or law or anything, but it's understanding that flows over two hours. So that's kind of the general standard that Fire Marshal Office and state looks at is once you do the gallons per minute, it should flow for that two hours. That's generally the standard that they look at.
Right.
So how did we get to the two hours? I mean, is that a number we just picked out of the air?
No, I believe that there's standards. I wish I would have had the Fire Marshal come up today because he can get highly technical talking about this stuff, but there is a standard.
Yeah, so I'll leave it to one attorney. So there's no statewide standard. So it's up to each locality Fire Marshal to establish that standard because we haven't adopted the appendix. So unless you adopt the appendix, it's up to local Fire Marshal's Office to determine what that flow is. You know, a while ago, years ago, before all this 500 gallons per minute was established. And in practice, there's always been understanding that it's been a two-hour flow. We just have never actually specified that in ordinance, and it's never come up until more recently when we've been approached about fire hydrants and fire flow with the growth in development. And so that's what prompted this text amendment. Again, in practice, it's always been understanding 500 gallons per minute for two hours. And I know, I think in the appendix, I believe is recognized fire hydrant, I believe is 200. There's at least a minimum of 250 gallons per minute for two hours or something, but they do mention two hours. Or 1,000.
1,000 gallons per minute.
Right. But I believe in the appendix, and if you look at other localities, the appendix does talk about duration. And I believe two hours is based on other standards. So we didn't just come up with two hours. I think that's kind of an industry standard when you're talking about fire flow, whether it's for a pumper or a hydrant or whatnot, it's usually, there's a standard time that they need to be able to provide that flow.
Because if you don't put anything in there also, it can be for two minutes. And then a developer's going to roll up and say, hey, look, we put 500 gallons per minute, it's two minutes. You didn't specify. So we don't want to get ourselves into that situation before it makes it clear to everybody involved. And to answer your question, and I really wish the Fire Marshal was here, but like I think in the appendix, I think it does specify. It does get very specific. So that's why we're trying to pull some of those standards without fully adopting that appendix and becoming really rigid on some of our.
The appendix is more stringent than what's our stringent, but what we're trying to do.
I personally would like to see what the surrounding counties, Lee, Wake, Johnston, Cumberland, Sampson. I would like to see what they require, as well as what's required by the municipalities in Harnett County.
Did we do anything for the county? I think Rodney may have that stuff, but we can definitely get that. Yeah. If we don't already have it, Richard Fire Marshal's office is.
I'll get him on.
That's right.
And I know that towns are a whole lot more stringent because they're smaller area. They're usually 1,000 gallons per minute, but we'll get the specific and get it to you and have it to you Monday night.
Do you know what an anger is?
I'm sure it's probably 1,000 because of the density when you do.
I've never heard it talked about in anger.
Well, it's something that you don't talk about a lot. When we redone the UDO years and years ago, the Fire Marshal's Office came to us and said, hey, look, man, we're putting these fire hydrants out here in these subdivisions. Yeah, they're on six-inch lines. We're pulling up to them and hooking to them, and there's nothing coming out. There's not enough pressure for us to go out and actually fight the fire. So if you don't mind, put something in the ordinance. And so that's where the 500 gallons per minute came in because that's where it originated from. So now we're coming back and trying to put a little bit more, you know, specifics on it. So because we're dealing with a lot more growth than we were in those times. So.
Mr. Locklear, do we have a time constraint on this? Or is this something that we could put off to the next work session and have y'all bring this information that's been requested to discuss further? I would just hate to bring this up Monday night being we're not going to have all this information.
I would say it's not an absolutely pressing matter, but we are getting a lot of inquiries about fire flow and alternatives to providing fire flow and so on. And so as part of this phased approach that Sockers talked about, this was step one, but there's going to be further discussion about fire flow and how to handle developments occurring further out from our system.
If you want, what we'll do is we can move this back into, say, phase two, which I'm about to describe right here in a second. And we'll handle those two at the same time at the next available meeting, if you want to do that, to make the board more comfortable.
It would be fine with me, but.
Yeah, I think our next work session is the 29th.
And we'll have all that.
Okay. What are we asking for right now? What are we requiring right now?
Just a 500 gallons.
And again, I think in practice, generally, it's two hours, but we just have never.
It's never been written.
It's never been written down.
They asked where the references to the two hours, when the developers are told 500 in two hours. They look at the code, and the code only says 500 gallons per minute without a duration in there. And so we shouldn't have a verbal standard without the written standard to back it up. And so that's our purpose here.
Because again, as Sock here said, if someone came and had a fire flow test that showed that if you put 500 gallons per minute, it's only for a minute or so, that's not going to put out a fire. So we got to put something.
We don't want a false impression related to the protection that exists in the subdivision.
What concerns me is we've got neighborhoods in northwest. What concerns me is we've got neighborhoods in northwest Harnett that don't even have fire hydrants. How'd they build those with no fire flow?
What neighborhood?
Huh?
Which neighborhood? Must have been either.
Off of Ballard Road. We'll talk about it later.
Okay. Yeah, I'd like to hear that.
In fact, Chief Prince has said, we use tankers, we don't need fire hydrants in there, so.
Might be Ballard Woods, which that is a very tricky subdivision, so to speak, considering the timeframe it was built in. All right, Phase Two of the process that I mentioned has to do with non-residential alternative firefighting methods for these kind of one-off situations where we have, like for instance, storage facilities that sit out, really no structure involved, but it's a storage facility and they're required to have a hydrant, but you know, it's way off the beaten path and you're just having a storage facility and there's no real alternative way other than a fire hydrant to provide fire protection. We're working with the Fire Marshal's Office to put some things in place that'll give them the leeway. They've been doing it already, we believe, in a few situations where it made sense, but as the manager mentioned, we'd like to get something written that'll actually give them more leeway to provide some alternative methods, keep in mind for non-residential developments that end up being in rural areas. Basically, giving folks that, you know, if we have a commercial opportunity that sits out maybe in a rural area and they can't get a fire hydrant there, then there are some alternative things that they can do. Maybe it's pumping hall, maybe it's a pond that's on site, there's all kinds of things out there. So that'll be Phase Two, that'll be coming before you soon. And then the last thing that we have talked about that we want to get ahead and kind of put it on your radar, so to speak, we spoke with the manager's office and they seem to like the idea of what we would call a rural subdivision where we have very large lots, maybe they don't have fire protection through the conventional way with fire hydrants, but it would be one to two acre lots where there's not a risk, if there is a structure to burn down, maybe it doesn't burn down three others, which is our concern that we've had here lately. So that's kind of our long-term approach that's kind of coming down the pipe soon. So it'll be another alternative for these areas where we don't really have the proper fire or the suppression or the pressure, I should say, in those areas. So it's an alternative for developers and things like that, so. But we'll take this, go back and come back to you at your next work session. Any other questions?
Any more questions, Mr. Locklear? All right, thanks, sir. All right, Urgency Services has a request for concerning a fireworks display at Campbell. I guess this is after a ballgame or something?
Yes, this is, we get quite a few of these here from the actual vendor who does this for Campbell, but this is for March 25th, April 8th, and April 22nd. It's at the football field. Fire Marshal's Office has reviewed the plans, their insurance, and their licensing, and they are good to go with that, and we're just looking for your approval at this time.
Any questions for Mr. Smith? All right, we'll put it on the consent agenda for next Monday night then.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, sir. You have copies of their permits and everything?
Yes, it should be in your package, it's the back of that licensing, it should have a copy of insurance and their actual A T F license. Got it.
All right. Next is a session of the Economic Development Work Plan. Mr. Lockery?
Morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners.
Morning.
All right. So I just hit two months on the job and I've had a chance to meet individually and also meet with you in group sessions. And overwhelmingly, I've heard one common theme, that you guys want to move the needle. You really want to do, you know, kind of really take on competitive measures to provide opportunity for the people of our community. I've seen it with your Rose Strategic Plan that was adopted last fall, I've seen it with your Legislative Priorities, and I've seen it with the most recent strategic planning effort, the 2032 Plan. And so, in doing this, what I did is, is I created an annual work plan that identifies the goals and strategic actions that I'm going to ask for adoption for to basically match what you're putting out. And so, to hope this plan does it, I've loaded the boat, it's a lot of stuff in there, we'll probably have to figure out how we're going to do all of it, but I think it's very important, everything that's in there. And so, a work plan is really an operational plan used to accomplish goals through our strategic actions. It coincides with the three plans that I've just mentioned, your most recently adopted strategic plan, the Legislative Priorities, and the County Strategic Plan. Goal number one is to transition the Harnett County's Public Economic Development Organization to a public-private model. The strategic action is to administer recommendations outlined in Ernie Pearson's report through Sanford-Holthauser. This is the most recent report that you guys initiated in the fall, right before I was hired, the review and enhancements of the Economic Development Organization structure. Okay? Goal number two is to enhance Harnett County's ability to recruit and retain companies through product development initiatives. What I've seen in my career, if you don't have a building or shovel-ready land, you really don't have the ability to attract quality living ways, jobs, and companies to the community. And so, it's very important that we take on those initiatives to compete with our neighboring counties and we fight for those jobs here in Harnett County. We have a lot of folks leaving every day, heading out of the county, heading to Raleigh, heading to Fayetteville. And those folks are on the road an hour each way. They're getting home, they've got less time to spend with their families, we're losing revenue, we're losing opportunity. And so, the way we do that is, is we need to look at additional land for industrial expansion. Right now, we've only got 44 acres left on the I-95 corridor in the Edgerton Industrial Park. That's not enough. We've got a recent announcement of a 500,000 square foot spec building being built down in Johnson County in the business park in Four Oaks. We've got another site on the 95 corridor where a private developer has specked out multiple very large shell buildings. And the reality is, is that we're going to need to identify more land in our county. Our current business parks, we've got Brightwater, which is a good park, but it's not really, doesn't marry up within many cases, the companies that are shopping through the state and the private site selectors. We've got the Western Harnett Industrial Park that I believe has some limitations, and I think we're going to have to assess some of that. And again, you know the situation with 95, that's our most prominent industrial asset, we don't have a lot of land left there. Some of our neighboring counties have taken on initiatives to build buildings, to bring in private partners like Sammatt and Agrocell and J M Thompson and other groups to be able to go ahead and get a building that's ready, that has high ceilings and is a shell that can easily be adapted. And so I think we need to explore a public-private partnership with a spec building group. And I think we need to increase the shovel readiness of our land. This can equate to our current business parks and also private sites, we have the ability to do both, and we'll speak to that a little later. Okay. Goal number three is to increase economic development marketing efforts to promote the county. We've got a variety of different things here, including a new website, our website, current website is five years old. If we do a new website, we're going to need to update our photography, which is also, we have some photos that were recently done from a tourism website, but I think for the most part, we're going to need to update photography to make sure that we're current. We need to define a labor shed. A labor shed is a contiguous area where commuters for work drive in and drive out of the marketplace, represents about an hour's drive. I put a map up there of one that I coordinated for Pasquotank County when I worked there. That's important. Along with that labor shed, we tap into the educational system through a program like Jobs EQ or E M S I, and it allows us to understand the various educational components, the degrees, the certificate programs, the number of folks that are graduating through the Community Colleges Bywork Program, the number of graduates Campbell has through the pharmacy program, et cetera. And so that's real important when we're courting potential employers, they need to understand what that labor market looks like. I've got here, we add a new marketing position that would complete the team of four that we need to effectively transition to the public-private partnership model for economic development. We need new marketing materials. Not only do we need marketing materials for our five target sectors, but we need marketing materials to be able to help recruit the talent we need to our county. We need a real estate piece that helps folks find homes and understand that they can live right here in Harnett County. We need a variety of different things that show off our aviation asset and others. And we need to formalize all of that via a marketing plan. The type of system I'm used to working in, the marketing person will work off a marketing plan, the existing industry person works off a B R E plan, and the director manages the strategic plan and annual work plan. Okay? We need to support existing Harnett County companies. And so we need to update our employer database while we're conducting, proactively conducting B R E visits. And so that's just simply to understand what their needs are, take it to a variety of different levels to understand their building sizes, their expansion needs. I've been able to help several companies in my career by going and talking to them and realizing they had expansion needs. Next thing you know, they were coordinating with the state, and so when you go and touch those bases, you're willing to, you're able to see that there's a lot of demand. I think we need to have a quarterly newsletter that we communicate to our employers and partners and starting this quarter and moving forward. Tell our success stories, tell about the various grants and programs, tell a variety of different things in that, to keep the commissioners and board members connected to the business community. I believe we need to formalize the company communication with a B R E plan as well, as mentioned earlier. And I think we need to review our economic development incentive guidelines. This was one of the items in your most recent strategic plan along with your development policies. This was a thought that in 2017, I think it needs a fresh look, just to make sure that we're keeping up with the general statutes for local government appropriations and also the ever-evolving business climate. And last but not least, we need to support your legislative priorities for broadband, natural gas expansion, and the pursuit of four-lane transportation corridors. And so our staff needs to help serve in administrative and lobbying capacity and marketing capacity for you as you pursue those initiatives and help in any way that we can. All right? I've identified some immediate next steps. A lot of the steps are kind of self-evident within the plan, but these are some of the immediate steps I've identified. I think we need formal adoption of the work plan by the commissioners. We need, we're going to need to coordinate requests for proposals for the new website and marketing material, not all of it, but at least the target sector material, photography, and likely a fundraising partner via the Sanford-Holthauser final report. Typically, there are fundraising partners that are identified through final reports that take organizations like ours to a public-private partnership. It allows the organization to raise private funds from a variety of different entities within the community, and so that's a likely next step, and I just want you to be prepared for that. Identify land for future industrial expansion, we need to, we can do that as a staff. Done that for two communities, and so I have the ability to identify it, but in order to solidify it and make sure we're making a good, you know, a good investment for the taxpayers, we would need to bring in a third party to assess that land for us. And I think we need to, you know, bring specifically the building partners in to assist with the market research and shell building location. When we understand the costs and financials of it, then we could issue a request for proposals and qualifications to select the partner. It's real important, I've found too, with courting these spec building developers, that we, there are going to be financial partners, they're going to tell us, for the most part, where they would like to invest in our community. And so from our perspective, that's basically leveraging our economic development assets, various drivers, and so it allows us to get the quickest wins, generate the jobs and the revenue so we can keep going either in those areas and other areas. And we need to work with county administration, H R, and finance to identify funds for the marketing position and coordinate the job advertisement. And our staff can go ahead, we're going to go ahead and do the labor shed analysis, the newsletter, and update the employer database, and we're going to go ahead and start identifying sites where we can look at shovel-ready programs like the Duke Site Readiness Program. And so, really one of the things I want to cement while we're, you know, I say this a lot, but I think it's important, we get caught up sometimes in our messages where we talk about shell buildings and land and public-private partnerships, but that really translates to opportunity and jobs, and that really translates to the impact on people. So I think it's important we always bring it full circle and look at that. Any questions or concerns or comments?
Any questions for Mr. Lockery? I think you've done a good job on this plan.
Thank you, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't have questions, but I just want to say, Mr. Locklear, you have outlined what I have been talking about for years now. That county's got to change, and you seem to be making this change. All of this stuff that you outlined here is much needed in this county. I'm not against growth, I want to make that clear, and I am for smart growth. And we can't have smart growth without having jobs, supplying some jobs for our citizens. And not only jobs for our citizens, but to take care of the staff that we have working here for our county. Because without taking care of our staff, we can't move our agenda and your agenda forward. I got to say, and I want to say, I appreciate you, I appreciate you outlining what we have to do, and I look forward to seeing you accomplish what is needed to move this county forward with jobs. And I told you when you first came in, when you and I met, you're going to have to hit the ground, you're going to have to start running. Because with the population growth that we have here, we are soon going to run out of land. And I applaud you because you have done that. You've hit the ground, you have started running, and I'm eager to see where it's going to land, all of us. This is just not for me, the county commissioner, or whatever. We can't do anything without some assistance from people like you to come in and outline plans as to where we, where we, where we need to grow and what we need to do to get ourselves in the right place. In the right place is jobs for our citizens. And thank you, and I just want to say, I'm looking forward to see you move to the right position with this plan.
Thanks, Commissioner McCoy, I appreciate it, the feeling's mutual. I've been on both sides of the equation before, and when there's a board that's pushing, it's a really good thing. I see y'all wanted a good thanks for the people, the community, and so it's truly, it's us, it's a team effort.
That's right.
Mr. Westman, I'd just like to follow up on Ms. McCoy's comments and just express my appreciation for the development of a plan. It is really refreshing for me to see a plan so that we know and have some direction going forward. And as Ms. McCoy and other commissioners have stated, we are certainly supportive of smart growth, and applaud you and will support you in your efforts to move in that direction. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Matthews. I enjoy our coffees as well and your commitment to the Harnett County school system all these years. I know in our conversation, your desire to move the community forward and really make sure that the folks that you're educating through the school system have an opportunity that speaks volumes, so I appreciate you.
Thank you.
As you and I've talked about, I think we finally have a roadmap and a plan for where we want to go. If Harnett County's had a plan in the past, it's been a long time prior to, actually prior to anybody that's in this current administration and board. I think it was even prior to your joining the board, Ms. McCoy, so it's refreshing to see that the thought that's gone into this and that we now have a plan, we know where we're going, and, you know, that. And, you know, that old saying, beggar to plan is plan to fail. Well, we've now got a plan, so that means we're not going to fail. We're going to move this county forward, and I'm really excited about it. And for my part, whatever you need, within reason. I can qualify everything these days, within reason. I will do my best to see that you get it. I can't speak for the rest of the commissioners, but I think that's the general consensus of this board.
Thanks, Commissioner Westman. It's been a pleasure working with you. You've been pushing the whole time I've been here, and so I enjoy that. I appreciate you.
Yeah, Christian and I, we were talking yesterday afternoon, and he said something, I don't know, I don't even remember what it was. He said, we'll do this such and such. And I said, nah, let's do it now. And he said, well, I agree with you. He said, but... So both of us are pushing. Any other comments? Well, if there's no other comments or questions, I'm going to add this to the consent agenda for adoption at our meeting on Monday. All right. Very good. Thanks, sir. All right, Mr. Haney, Fort Tamar.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Melissa, if you would put it on the spreadsheet, a document that is after that. So I'm here at long last to present to you with a draft funding plan for Harnett County's American Rescue Plan allocation. A copy of the draft plan is included in the agenda packet, and I will go over those items in detail momentarily. But first, I want to walk through the process that we have gone through in order to develop this plan. And if you have any questions throughout the presentation, please feel free to interrupt. After I present the plan today, staff will be available for any comments, questions, or directions you have at this point. We would then like to hold an opportunity for public input at your next meeting on March 21st. And after that, we will bring this back to you at your March 28th work session for additional discussion and direction from the board. And then we will make any requested changes, and then if you so desire, you may adopt the plan at your April 4th meeting or later if additional changes are warranted. So to clarify, when I say "we" in this presentation, we do have an internal American Rescue Plan team comprised of members of county management, budgeting, finance office, and legal department. So as you know, the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 was signed into law on March 11th of 2021. It includes funding for state governments, of which North Carolina received $5.44 billion, and funding for cities, towns, and counties, of which Harnett County received $26,411,744. We received the first half of this allocation last August and anticipate receiving the second half around August of 2022. Funds may only be used for costs incurred on or after March 3rd of 2021, and they must be obligated by December 31st of 2024 and expended with all work completed by December 31st of 2026. That is important. American Rescue Plan funds may also be used for any of the four categories. Support the COVID-19 public health and economic response. Provide premium pay for eligible workers performing essential work. Replace public sector revenue loss. And invest in water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. The use of these funds must comply with U.S. Treasury guidelines for the American Rescue Plan as well as state law. That is also important. In order to develop this draft funding plan, staff has been engaged heavily with the UNC School of Government, the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, and the National Association of Counties, attending numerous webinars, courses, and other events to get a better understanding of A R P eligible uses, policies, and procedures that must be in place in order to use these funds and the reporting requirements. As I discussed the last time I was before you, we also wanted to wait for the state budget to be adopted, which was on November 18th, 2021, and for the U.S. Treasury to release its final rule on the American Rescue Plan, which it did on January 6th of this year. Both of these developments provided additional flexibility and clarification regarding potential uses of these funds. Most notably, the state budget provided language that will allow the county to use American Rescue Plan funds for broadband. However, there are still considerable restrictions on the use of these funds for broadband, which I will address momentarily. In developing this draft funding plan, we had the following priorities in mind. First was using funds in a way that provides the most flexibility for the board to address critical needs and strategically plan for the future. This is similar to what we did with the Coronavirus Relief Fund and CARES Act funding the county received. Second, leveraging funds to maximize funding and reduce the burden on county taxpayers through application for additional grants. Third, minimizing the administrative burden on staff, and finally minimizing the reporting burden. The use of these funds is going to require the development of numerous policies to comply with federal guidelines as well as a significant reporting burden. So our goal has been to minimize these burdens to the extent possible. We also had three other considerations in mind. The U.S. Treasury's final rule allows local governments to use up to $10 million of their American Rescue Plan allocations for general government purposes. That means these funds are less restrictive, however, they still must comply with federal uniform guidance. We are recommending using this $10 million allotment to cover county employee payroll and benefits since that is one of the least onerous uses in terms of reporting. It will also allow the county to use the funds that would otherwise have been spent on those salaries and benefits without any restriction. Next, in developing this plan, we had to consider the timing of projects. As I mentioned earlier, this funding must be spent with all work completed by December 31st, 2026. While this seems like a substantial amount of time right now, for some of these projects, it is not. Additionally, the use of American Rescue Plan funds requires adherence to federal purchasing guidelines, which are more complex than the county's normal process. For these two reasons, there are some projects that you brought up during your February 24th planning retreat, which would not be eligible for these funds because they wouldn't be completed by the deadline. We are also recommending allocating any funds you wish to contribute to Harnett Regional Water towards a single project in order to minimize the compliance and reporting burden. Finally, since it was announced that Harnett County would be receiving funds from the American Rescue Plan almost a year ago, we have been approached by numerous community organizations, businesses, and individuals seeking a portion of these funds. While U.S. Treasury guidelines allow for American Rescue Plan funds to be used to support public health expenditures and address negative economic impacts related to COVID-19, state law limits the county's ability to provide certain types of assistance. In some cases, the county does not have the ability to provide assistance, such as grants to private sector. And in others, the county does not have the staff capacity that would be required to implement additional programs and manage the sub-receipients. Additionally, federal and state governments have made other funds available for public assistance programs, such as Emergency Food and Shelter Program, which you recently discussed at a previous meeting. That said, we want to make sure that the county's use of American Rescue Plan funds provides a significant benefit to the community, and we believe the draft plan does this. However, should the board have any specific programs or priorities you want staff to look into, we are happy to do so. I've included a memo on this topic from Senior Staff Attorney Chris Appel as part of this packet, and Chris is also available to answer any questions that you may have on this issue this morning. With all of those considerations in mind, we developed a draft funding plan for the county's American Rescue Plan allocation that I'm about to walk through. I do want to stress that this is intended to be a fluid document that will likely need to be adjusted over the coming months and years as additional information is obtained regarding the feasibility and cost of projects. We may not receive state broadband grants and may need to reallocate those funds. When we go to bid capital projects, they may come in over budget requiring additional funds or under budget allowing those funds to be repurposed. We may receive other grants to assist with some of these projects, allowing these funds to be reallocated as well. As such, we have also identified a number of additional priority areas where you may wish to allocate these funds should they become available. I also want to note that when I first came to you to discuss our American Rescue Plan allocation in September, I presented this funding in the context of other allocations and processes, including the Harnett County Schools ESER allocations, American Rescue Plan funding for the state, your capital improvements plan, and Harnett Regional Waters C I P. I want to stress that we view American Rescue Plan funding as an opportunity to move Harnett County forward in conjunction with multiple other processes. It won't solve every issue and fund every project, but what it can do is allow you to move forward with a number of priority projects and allow the county to proactively plan for the future through other processes I've mentioned, as well as processes like the school funding plan that was presented to you during your annual retreat. With that, are there any questions regarding this process before I go into the draft funding plan?
Any questions for Mr. Haney at this point? Yes, ma'am.
I want to know that you've outlined all the ways that we can use this funding coming from the federal government. And in outlining what we can use this money for, it seems that the money is a gift, a gift to us because without this money, we would not be able to do some of the things that is required of us as commissioners of this county. I am particularly interested in, is there any money? No, let me say it the right way. Is there any way that we can use this money for small businesses in this county? Because during this period of COVID, the virus, a lot of small businesses have lost a lot of revenue because people were not able to be engaged and go out and do the things that we normally do to keep our small businesses going. I just want to know if there's any way that we can use this money for that particular reason. Another thing is that some of the issues that, or some of the projects that you have listed that we're going to be using the money for is worthwhile, especially with projects here that we've been needing, we have needed to invest in for the citizens of our county. I want to commend you for one thing, many things really, but I want to commend you for the fact that we can use some of this money to go into disastrous areas or communities in this county and fix some of the issues that we've been facing for many, many, many years. But going back to my question, is there any money there for small businesses?
Yes, ma'am. So first, just to talk broadly about your second point, there are projects that we've identified with this funding that either were not currently funded or that were planned for future years that we will be able to expedite with this funding. So that's what I'm talking about. As you mentioned, when I talk about this will help the county plan more proactively for the future. In terms of funds for small business, that is what I was talking about related to state requirements, and we do not have the ability to provide grants. We could do potentially a loan program, but I'll let Chris Appel speak more to that.
So the issue with the grants is we're only allowed to do grants if it's for a public purpose, and we're getting a public service in return. And so that's the issue with the grant for private business because it's not, you know, they're not providing a public service. I mean, as much as they want to help out the private businesses, they don't do that. They're in it to, they're for profit to make money. So that's the issue with the grants. Now, you can do grants for nonprofits. I mean, we've done previous, obviously, funding for nonprofits to provide a public service because they, we can provide grants to nonprofits that provide a service that, which we would be allowed to do, but we contract out to do that. So that can be done. But you can't then give a grant to a nonprofit who then operates a grant program to give the private businesses. You can't do that because if you give money to nonprofits to run a grant program, they have to follow the same rules that were held to. So again, they would have to do the whole public purpose and providing a public service in return. So really, grants only work for nonprofits. And regarding loans, we could do a loan program, but that is a bit complicated. One, it has to serve a legitimate purpose and does not compete with private lenders. So you couldn't offer a low-interest rate loan. You'd have to do it market or above rate. So there's one, there's one issue is we, you know, they just need to go to the private lenders and try to get money that way, which they're required to do. They can't go through a loan program, a local government loan program, without going to the private sector first. That's another requirement. And then on top of that is, then we have to manage that loan program. We'd be our own bank. And the issue with that with it being a smaller county is the time and resources that are available to manage a loan program. So it's not that we're against it, it's just there are barriers to doing a loan program.
I understand what you're saying. At least you answered my question, but one more question I have for you. I did hear that you could use some of that money for our county staff increase in pay, something that's been very much needed for many, many years. I think the last time they really had an increase, other than the one we gave in last month, it was probably about 2015 because I was here and was pushing for that. Now, is there money there even though we have given our staff an increase in pay for February, just past February, let me say it right, for follow-up of trying to keep them in compliance with COLA? Because that alone would keep us from being so far behind, and it certainly would keep us from losing some of our best staff. And because I do believe that losing our best staff to other surrounding counties costs us more money than it would, than it would if we invest in our own staff here. So that's my question. Is there money to move us forward with COLA maybe in another year or so?
Yes, ma'am. There is funding for salaries. I'm going to mention some of that in the plan when I present it. I do know that in working through the budget process, when the board prioritized its strategic plan goals, moving forward with a staff compensation market study was at the top of the list for the organization, which is something that we're looking at, as well as putting a COLA into the budget from the beginning. I don't want to steal Mr. Trout's thunder, but that, those are things that we've talked about, even outside of American Rescue Plan.
Correct.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I'll keep going. So in looking at the plan, we have essentially split the county's total American Rescue Plan allocation into two separate pots of money. The first is roughly $16.4 million, and this must be spent on A R P eligible projects. Our primary goal in developing this plan has been to provide at least $16.4 million in A R P eligible projects so that all of this funding gets used. There is less flexibility with this funding, and you're limited to what you can use it for. The second is approximately $10 million, and that's the lost revenue replacement standard allowance. This is the $10 million that may be used with fewer restrictions and that we recommend using for employee salaries and benefits to supplant. This in turn will free up $10 million or possibly more, as I'll discuss in just a moment, to be used on other county needs and priorities that may not be eligible to be funded from the $16.4 million. And with that, I will go over the individual items and the actual draft funding plan. So under the American Rescue Plan... So under the American Rescue Plan eligible projects, and that's the $16.4 million, the first item is continued COVID-19 mitigation. So the county was able to address the vast majority of our COVID-19 needs during, using displaced CARES Act funding. However, there still may be some minor needs related to that among the county's departments, which this funding may be used for if needed. So I would anticipate that amount would be nominal. Next is broadband, the matches for the GREAT and CAB grant programs. So the General Assembly has incentivized and encouraged counties to use American Rescue Plan funds to provide a match for the GREAT Grant and CAB programs. And that's the GREAT Grant, as we've been familiar with and have applied for before, and CAB is called connecting, I believe it's called connecting areas to broadband. And that has not, that's still in the development. And these are being implemented by the state. So staff recommends setting aside the maximum required match for these programs should they be funded. And that includes $750,000 for the GREAT Grant, and that would be a required match for a maximum $8 million grant. And then $2 million for the CAB program. That's a $4 million grant or up to. In the event the county is unsuccessful in pursuing these grants, then these funds would be able to be used for other purposes. Next are emergency Viper radio replacements for county government and for fire and EMS departments. So for county government, just under $2.5 million. So as background, Harnett County invested in the Viper radio system in 2013 and purchased radios for all emergency responders, including fire departments and towns. They will be at the end of their useful life in 2025, and Motorola has stated it will end support of the radios in 2023, meaning that we can, any repairs will be difficult. The state is also requiring that all radios on the Viper network be upgraded by July 1st of 2025. The replacement of 298 mobile and 288 portable county government radios is currently included in the CIP in fiscal year '25 using a transfer of $2.5 million from capital reserves. The U.S. Treasury final rule classified the replacement of these radios as an eligible use of ARP funds. So using ARP funds to replace these radios would potentially free up additional capital reserve for other projects and allow us to move forward more quickly with this project. Under the radio replacement for fire and EMS departments, that's a cost of just over $2 million. And as noted above, when the county invested in Viper Emergency Radio System in 2013, it purchased radios for all emergency responders, including fire departments and towns. The county issued debt to fund the purchase and communicated to the departments and towns that they would be responsible for funding, funding the future cost of replacements. However, in 2021, the Harnett County Chiefs Association applied for a federal grant to assist with upgrading the Viper radio project and was awarded a grant in the amount of $836,000. In September of last year, the Chiefs Association, in light of the ARP funds, submitted a request to the county for $2,028,050 in American Rescue Plan funding to complete the upgrade for fire and EMS squads. And that's something that we've recommended, including in the American Rescue Plan funding because it is covered. It was not prior to the final rule. Next is the outfit of the third floor of the courthouse. And for the next two projects, there are some capital thresholds in the final rule. If it's above $1 million, then there is some additional justification required. So these may be projects that depending, as we go through that process, we may want to move down to that $10 million rather than fund here, but we can, we'll know more. Right now, we believe there is justification to allow this to be funded out of the American Rescue Plan funding. And I'll get into why these two projects specifically in a moment. So the Harnett County courthouse was completed in 2002 and included approximately 12,150 square feet of unfinished space on the third floor. The county is currently conducting a space needs assessment. There's an RFQ out at the moment that will include a feasibility study for the outfit of this unfinished space. We obtained an opinion of probable cost late last month that estimates the outfit costing $3.9 million. We hope that's high, but we don't know. Per the U.S. Treasury final rule, American Rescue Plan funds may be used for capital expenditures, quote, "that respond to the public health and negative economic impacts of the pandemic." Written justification, again, is required for capital projects of more than $1 million. The courthouse has seen significant impacts from COVID-19, and this outfit would address those issues by providing additional space for staff and citizens. When you're doing your justification for a capital project above $1 million, you've got to look at the alternative scenarios and determine, you know, is this the best alternative for this scenario? We believe that the outfit of space ranks highly on that list just because the space is already there rather than having to go out and construct something new. Yes?
What, like, what is the plan for it, then? What are you all planning on putting in there? And if it's such a high priority and you're willing to put $4 million into something that hasn't been touched in 20 years?
That is what the feasibility study will tell us. It's going to look at the different options for that space along with the needs of the current courthouse facility in terms of future needs, and it will recommend the best option for the county moving forward.
We don't have anything pressing where people are trying to get in there. We don't need extra courtroom space or anything now, or is there anything that's?
I think it's been said anecdotally that it would be nice to have more space. We could use more space. If we had more space, it would have made it easier during the pandemic. So those kind of comments, in other words, there's the possibility that the use of that space, if the space had been available, it would have been used and made operations easier during the pandemic. And so for us, we feel it's worth looking at. That is low on the priority list as it comes to other projects that we have when you look at our capital improvement plan. But it is also an opportunity that presents itself with this type of funding to do something that could very well benefit us, but utilize funding that isn't going to cost taxpayers of Harnett County.
Yeah, but I mean, that $4 million could be appropriated somewhere else to kind of free up money somewhere else, you know, for us to use. I mean, $4 million for upfitting a courtroom, and I got kids out in huts right now and schools and different stuff like that. I mean, that's not going to fly.
I understand that, and so that is why we have this discussion. It's an identified project. It may not rank in the priorities as we continue through this process. You may find that there are other targets for this money that are much more supportable, and so that's why we have the discussion.
I mean, it's, the outfit's not even in the CIP, correct?
It's in the CIP as a future project because there is no funding and not a, there's not a
Correct.
sufficient scope for the project. So if that were to be obtained, which it will be with this feasibility study, then that could move forward. And again, you know, certainly, this is your plan, and this is something that y'all certainly make the decision on what should or should not be in it. However, what we're doing for this, especially this top portion, is trying to identify a way to use the ARP eligible funds. And that's what makes this more attractive.
You can, you also said that you can use it for, you know, funding other projects that we would be taking money away from.
For the $10 million, that is, that is absolutely true. It's a little more complicated with the $16.4 that I'm discussing right now. However, as we can move forward, there may be other projects that, that are options. You know, a school project, that becomes difficult because of the timeline and getting things finished by the deadline.
Got you. Well, my, my only comment or question really was, you know, what are, like, the pressing issues? I'm like, why this is even a priority? I haven't even heard anything come to, you brought it before, so.
We, well, and through different clerk of court administrations, it has been an issue that's been pushed to the forefront at times. And again, not having a scope and not having funding prevented that from being done. I am hopeful that this is, we went, we got multiple estimates for the cost, and we went with the highest one just as a placeholder. I am hopeful it will be less, but again, I can't, I can't tell you that.
Got you. Mr. Haney, could I interrupt you?
Yes.
This might be a good place for me to ask this question. Mr. Nicol brought that up. I know with the $10 million, the displaced money, you listed some other potential projects. And being well familiar with ESR funding and federal guidelines with that money, I, I know there are only certain projects that will fit in that 16-plus million. I guess my question would be if we're going to discuss an item such as Commissioner Nicol was just mentioning, would it be possible, or are there other projects that you could identify that this money might can be spent for other than what the committee has brought forward at this point? For us to consider going forward, should we decide that, you know, one of these projects we'd rather not, rather look at something else? What would those options be, I guess is my question?
Yes, and so what I'm going to do in a few items is go over another option for displacing additional funds to where you can add potentially to that $10 million pot.
Very good.
Right now, these were the, the top priorities that we saw, that we know and believe fully are eligible for the $16.4.
And I know, and I know that's very important for auditing purposes later on, potential auditing later on.
Okay.
I was just, I want to ask, this, this, we have this money available for projects that, you know, the county needs. Can we use any of these funding for funds? Or we have a need for parole, of course, place to put our parole staff. And I was wondering, is there enough room on that third floor to use for that? Because we really are running out of land space. So we got to figure out something for this becoming a critical issue for us.
Yes, so we are aware of a number of needs in the county, and that's why I think we want to put this through a feasibility study to give us an objective third-party look at what makes the most sense for the space. The county does rent space for both juvenile justice and probation and parole. You know, those are, those are needs that would also be considered within this feasibility study as potential options as well as other options. I know in many parts of the courthouse, again, it was built two decades ago, so there are other departments within the courthouse that I believe are out of space as well. So this study will look at that third floor. And also, and then the cost would be certainly much higher, the courthouse was built with the possibility of adding a fourth floor if needed. But we want to look at that, especially that unfinished space, because it is lower hanging fruit than building a new facility potentially, to look at what makes the most sense. And when that study is complete, you will get a recommendation and, you know, can obviously look at the different options for that and make a decision on what you believe should go there. But to answer your question, that is something that is being looked at as well, what the best use for those facilities are. Because again, the county does have to lease space for those, those functions. And, you know, as we've realized over the last several years with all of our leases, there's the potential for, for them to go up. And if we don't have another option, you know, we don't have another option. Okay. Next, along similar lines is the outfit of the second floor of the Department of Social Services building. So the existing DSS building was constructed in 1996, and a two-story, 10,000-square-foot addition was completed in 2020. The second floor of the addition, which is approximately 5,000 square feet, was left unfinished pending future growth. DSS Director Paul Polinsky has said this space is needed now to accommodate additional staff. The county is currently conducting, again, a space needs study that will include a feasibility study for this unfinished space. And we did obtain an opinion of probable cost for this outfit that was estimated at $1.6 million. And again, this is capital expenses that respond to the public health and negative economic impacts of the pandemic are eligible. The Department of Social Services has seen significant impacts from COVID-19, including staff outbreaks, which have required at times a staggered telework schedule. And this outfit would address those issues by providing additional staff space. One point to note on this is that because it is social services, a portion of that project would be reimbursable by the state. Talking to Paul Polinsky, he believes it would be north of 50%. So that, again, makes that, makes that more attractive in terms of an outfit. Okay. Next is a lead for North Carolina Fellow. American Rescue Plan funds may be used to cover staff assigned to help administer the program. The county's manager, county manager's office has applied for and was accepted as a lead for North Carolina Host Site for the 2022 through 23 program year to host a fellow who can be brought in to assist with American Rescue Plan grant administration and help identify other state and federal grants through the American Rescue Plan. Right now, we need additional staff capacity to be able to fully take advantage of those opportunities in addition to people's regular duties. They'd also be working with county manager's office financed legal budget to help make sure that we are in compliance with reporting and the policies related to the American Rescue Plan Act. So the total price to host a fellow in the first year is $54,000. However, the county's anticipated cost share would be $25,000 based on being a Tier 2 county. And then there will be additional funding for an optional second year. Okay. Next is the Harnett Regional Water, North Harnett Wastewater Treatment Plant Upgrade Contribution. So county management at this point in this plan proposes contributing $5 million of the county's total American Rescue Plan allocation to Harnett Regional Water to be used for the North Harnett Wastewater Treatment Plant Upgrade Project. And then should additional American Rescue Plan funding become available, additional funds may be contributed to the project as well. This is what I was talking about earlier related to contributing funds to a single project because of the reporting requirements and the uniform guidance that has to be followed. Steve Ward, who I believe is here, has confirmed that, one, this project is eligible. Water and wastewater is one of the most eligible areas for American Rescue Plan Act funding and that it has followed the procedures required to, to be eligible for these funds from the federal government. In talking to him, the county's portion of this project would be well over the $26.4 million entirely. So there would be no issue in providing funding to this project. I know that they, I believe, received a $3.8 million grant in the state budget that is being put towards this project as well. So that is the discussion there. We put that $5 million in as a recommended placeholder, and then as things shift. And again, with the $16.4 million, you want to make sure you can spend that. So this is an easy, one of the easiest places you could spend that money. Okay. Next is a low emission X-ray scanner for the detention center. We have been approached by the sheriff's office requesting to purchase a low emission X-ray scanner for the detention center that will assist with screening inmates for COVID-19 and also allow staff to search for contraband at a safe distance. The total cost of the scanner is $188,000. However, the sheriff's office has agreed to contribute approximately $85,000 from a grant received through the state budget for that purpose, so you'd be closer to $100,000. Next is providing premium pay for county employees. So American Rescue Plan funds may be used to provide premium pay to eligible workers performing essential work during the pandemic. Eligible employees include those who perform regular in-person work during the pandemic, who interact with others physically or physically handle items handled by others. So employees may receive up to $13 per hour in additional wages or a maximum of $25,000 per worker during the period. Employers are encouraged to prioritize low and moderate income workers. While this is an option, so the board obviously has previously voted to provide all county employees with a one-time COVID-related bonus from the CARES Act funding. And as Commissioner McCoy mentioned, there was recently the two-grade reclassification of employees. So should the board wish to provide additional premium pay, staff will review eligibility requirements and can provide any recommendations regarding positions that should be included. We would recommend doing something more targeted if that's the direction the board wishes to go in in terms of what employees are covered. Additionally, there is the ability to provide funding specifically related to retention incentives for employees. So that's something else we, we can look at if that's what the board is interested in doing. And I know we've certainly got some departments that even with those reclassifications, they still have considerable vacancies. And then finally, under this group, restoring pre-pandemic employment. So American Rescue Plan funds may be used to pay for payroll and covered benefits associated with increasing the number of budgeted full-time equivalents up to 7.5% above the pre-pandemic baseline. Staff, we're currently working on determining what that number would be. There is some calculation involved, and based on how we budget positions with just budgeting for the full-time positions and position control, we're trying to make sure we just budgeting for the full-time positions and position control, we're trying to make sure we've got the correct numbers for that. However, there is the potential for salaries and benefits of any new employees who are hired as part of the FY '23 and '24 budgets to be covered using American Rescue Plan Funds. So this would mean that the county would either defer those costs associated with adding any new positions several years down the road until this funding can no longer be used, or if, in the event, we say, hey, we were going to add these positions anyway, we could supplant that funding that would otherwise be used to add, to make that $10 million total larger. So that is an option, and again, I would recommend any additional positions that the board wishes to add in the new budget be funded this way, and that will free up additional funds potentially. And as we know, staff salaries can, staffing is one of the most expensive things that 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 we pay for here, so that that could be substantial. Any questions about the $16.4 million?
Any questions at this point?
Okay. I will keep going. So again, the loss revenue replacement standard allowance is $10 million. Finance is working to calculate our actual loss revenue. We do not believe it is more than that, but if it is, that would raise our total. So we're going through the process. And additionally, we could add to that supplanted funding by potentially, you know, doing some of the things mentioned above. So our recommendation is to use that loss revenue funding for, I say, I wrote here, public safety salaries and benefits, but it would be just general county employee salaries and benefits. It's not restricted to public safety based on the the lost revenue requirements. So that would free up the $10 million in lost revenue replacements supplanted below. So again, this funding is is less restrictive, can be used for any general government purpose. And we've identified some projects that we believe here are priorities for the county, for the board. But certainly, there's there's flexibility here. So first would be Office 365 Cloud Migration. This is a cybersecurity issue for the county. And Chief Information Officer Ira Hall has requested that the county transition to Office 365 due to cybersecurity issues. So planned American Rescue Plan loss revenue could be used to cover the cost of this transition for three years, from April 2022 through March of 2025, at which time the county would need to identify general fund revenue to continue. The cost I put there is $1.16 million. That is a three-year cost, so it will be a third of that in each year. This is something that IT has submitted as an expansion request for the past two years. Is also submitting it this year. It is something that has been identified as a need that we have not otherwise been able to fund. One caveat related to that is that our contract with Microsoft renews in April. So if that is something the board is comfortable with, we would request authorization to proceed with this when the new contract comes up. Next is another cybersecurity-related issue is the information technology fiber extension, $230,000. The county's 2023 through '29 CIP includes a project to construct a one-mile fiber connection across the Cape Fear River in Lillington from 310 West Duncan Street to Alexander Drive to provide network redundancy. This one-mile fiber connection would provide a more resilient and redundant loop for the county's core data network and phone system. The project, again, is currently included in the CIP as a funded project in FY '28. So the use of supplanted lost revenue would allow this project to move forward sooner and potentially supplant those funds in FY '28. Next is the Riverside Flood Project. The county engaged a third party to conduct a watershed assessment of the Riverside community, which determined it would cost approximately $500,000 to mitigate some of the issues experienced by residents in this area. The county has applied for a pair of grants to complete this project. However, staff recommends setting aside $500,000 in supplanted lost revenue to complete this project in the event the county is unsuccessful in pursuing those grants. Should the grants be received, this funding would be available for other needs. Next is the Fixed Wireless Broadband Phase 2 Match, $2 million. The county is currently working with Cloudwise to complete the first phase of this project, which will provide fixed wireless broadband to residents in Harnett Counties, in Harnett County north of the Cape Fear River. The second phase of this project would address portions of the county south of the river. And the county's half of this project would be approximately $2 million. That is in addition to the grants we're applying for, and again, well, I'll discuss that. I'll discuss additional broadband funding in a moment. But that would help complete the initial project we put together with Cloudwise that we were applying for a great grant and did not receive previously. Next is funding for Harnett Regional Jet Port. We've put a placeholder of $2.5 million here. Staff recommends setting aside this amount in supplanted lost revenue to assist with projects at Harnett Regional Jet Port, including completion of the new terminal and the purchase of additional land for future expansion. State funding has been obtained for portions of this project, but there are, as you know, substantial needs at the jet port that this funding could be used for. And next is funding green, for Greenway Development. We've put a placeholder of $1 million here. The Board of Commissioners adopted the Harnett County Bicycle Pedestrian and Greenway Plan in January of 2021 that identified priority Greenway projects throughout the county. The CIP calls for annual contributions of $100,000 to be set aside for Greenway construction and development each year. However, the state estimates that the average cost for Greenways is $1 million per mile. Staff recommends providing the appropriation of supplanted lost revenue to assist in building up the Greenway Trail Construction Capital Reserve to help expedite construction of Greenways in the county. And obviously, we are also looking at grant funding that would be available to to do those sorts of things as well. So those are the, that is the list of projects that we've identified with that supplanted funding. So if you look at the spreadsheet with all of those projects, and again, some don't have, some have not been input with dollar amounts for the the staffing needs. However, that adds up to $25.4 million. So you've got just under $1 million left with that plan available, and that's in addition to any funding that might be freed up otherwise within that. So there is a cushion that we were recommending to set aside as additional needs arise. And again, those are in that, right now, that's in the $10 million portion, so it would be flexible to be used as needed. Again, as I mentioned, we've also identified other potential projects that we're aware of that are priorities and may be something the board would like to look into for these funds, the $10 million portion. The purchase of additional land for recreation. I know there have been some discussions about some land that the county may wish to acquire that would need funding. The replacement of the Board of Elections facility, that too is in the the Space Needs Feasibility Study. So you will receive, when that report is completed, a recommendation on, you know, whether a new facility is warranted versus renovating the current facility and how to address that. So if that's something once you have that study that you would want to use these funds for, or a portion of them, that's that's open as well. Replacement of an animal shelter, which I know is something that has come up as well as a priority. We are currently moving forward with a feasibility study for that separate, just because it is so specified, separate of the rest of the Space Needs Study project to look at what would be needed there. Renovation of the former Ben Haven two-story classroom building. Funding currently has not been identified for that project. As I have mentioned before, and this would expedite the ability to to renovate that building and put it back into service. Additional funding for broadband. So Cloudwise, our ISP partner, is currently working on a plan that they should have available very soon that would show what it would take for countywide buildout of broadband. We intend to use that plan as a discussion point to, as we're looking at grants, grant opportunities, identifying projects for broadband. So if the board were inclined to put additional funding from that $10 million towards broadband, that is also an option, because we know countywide fiber buildout will be a substantial cost. And then finally, as was mentioned during the the board's planning retreat, funding for additional solid waste convenience sites for replacements, relocations of current sites, and then the addition of other sites. So that is the draft, and I want to emphasize the word draft, funding plan from staff. What questions? What direction? What comments do you have at this point?
I personally would like some time to maul some of these suggestions over, look at them, think about them.
I will defer to the rest of the board members.
Well, I don't want to jump down a rabbit hole of all the possibilities that this could be used for. I mean, I'm sure we can sit here for years and go over that, however, comma. I noticed that there wasn't anything with schools put in here. Is there kind of a reason for that? Is it because like we're splitting off like funding or other, other appropriations are coming down the line for the for schools? I mean, like, I know there's some projects like such as the door locks and different stuff like that that's going on that we are funding.
No, I would say that that there's not an intended reason behind that. However, I know there is a substantial amount of ESSER funding and projects related to that that are moving forward, mostly for, I think, additions, renovations for those funds, and per the board's planning retreat, there was a, a, an affordability model that showed the ability to go to the market to obtain bonds for future school construction. So that's not to say that any portion of this funding could not be used for that purpose. But we've there are other options for that as well.
My comments that I'll make is that as we looked at this, this was an opportunity for many of the things that the county would like to do without having to sell bonds and that type of stuff. And as we look at the capital improvement plans and opportunities this presents, it gives us that opportunity to do some of the projects without having to sell bonds or go into our capital reserve. We have a plan, we believe, for the construction of schools and some of those issues that's been developed. It's oftentimes harder for us to find the funding we need to do the things that we would like to see and complete it. We targeted different things such as making sure that our own facilities are upgraded, that the Greenways, which is going to be important as we continue to grow, providing those recreational opportunities for individuals. And so we're looking at those opportunities as being the bigger priority for us rather than the schools. And so that's kind of the instruction and discussion that we had as a group to really focus this money on assisting the county operations and opportunities and and projects that we've seen in the past.
Got that. Yeah, I mean, I understand all the restrictions and stuff too that come along with how this can, can't be spent, but, um, well, I mean, it might tick off some projects that, you know, we we would have used money for down the line or even not ever get to, as some of these.
The other thing I'll say is that the reason that with the schedule that Mr. Haney outlined, you know, we really are looking at next week being an opportunity for the public having us expose this to the general public now as to what we've identified. Maybe there are items that they've identified that they or they consider to be a higher priority, and they can come in and inform you of, well, looking at this list, we'd rather see an animal shelter money put aside for that or another project that they is is their personal preference. Allow them the opportunity to do that, and then we also have another opportunity where we ask you can present during a work session. This is an opportunity, a one-time opportunity, and so we will take whatever time is necessary. As mentioned, we have until 2026 to spend the money. However, as you look at many of these projects, they have long lead times, and so it's not necessary we make a quick decision, but we need to make a decision soon so that we can begin the process.
Top question. With these fundings and all the, all the funds that are coming down to the counties, through the state and all of that, is there not funding that the schools are getting? Because schools, schools here are a priority, especially with the growth that we have and growth that we continue to have. So the schools are a priority, but I'm thinking, and I have been reading on some readings, material that some of the funding is, some of this same kind of funding is coming down to the schools. So I know of several grants that the school have received and I have discussed with Commissioner Matthews to see if that money is being used. I gotta say, in asking him and questioning him, I was really pleased with his answers and all. So with these fundings, I'm just saying that the schools are not being left out. There is funding out there for the for the schools and funding that we're gonna have real access because of the need. It's a great need here for new schools, new schools. Even, um...
Yes, ma'am, and and I obviously don't want to speak for the school system, but what we are aware of is the the ESSER funding that has been provided through, I believe, some of that's through American Rescue Plan, some of it, I think, is through CARES Act. It is it is more substantial than the $26.4 million that the county is receiving. However, I know the school system has, there are some projects that the county and the school system are working together on that are actually going to be supplanted using that funds, which is a great benefit. But as we know what the, we know what the level of need in our county related to schools is. So making sure that we have a plan in place, and I think that was really the the point of bringing that 20-year bond plan to the board to show that this can be done with current funding, that there can be a plan put in place.
Thank you.
And I would say that although this is $26.4 million, and it seems like a great amount of money, as you've seen today, there there is considerable need for these funds, and it is not going to be difficult to to spend.
It goes quick. One thing that I would just like to say is like to keep in mind, and I mean, if we can, I know that some of these things are they're not just wishes, they're things that we need to get done, that we've been kind of kicking down the road for a while, or that we are going to allot money for, and, you know, we can utilize this money. However, I'd like to I personally, the way that I'm looking at it is, I mean, I've just got, you know, a gift in, you know, a gift of money in, like, I'm just not gonna go out and blow this, so like next year, I can't tell you what I what I did with that money. I'd like us to invest this. I mean, broadband, that's great. That's something that is needed, that, you know, is investing into the business that we're actually going to get something out of. Same thing with the jet ports, you know, and there was another, you know, couple of things on there, but I mean, stuff like that, that we can actually start seeing an ROI back on, you know, like, we need to start generating money off of this free money.
Yeah, we also wanted to make sure that the items that we listed were not perpetual projects. We don't want to set ourselves up for having to find funding in in 2027 for something that we're approving out of this funding. And so that's an important part of it as well for us. The fellow, that that approval is something that we need in order to manage the project, and when the funding part is gone, and the need won't be there for that individual, and so it goes away. So it it works well with the program as it exists. And I think that's that's kind of where we're gone with many of these things. They're investments for the long term for the county. So what I'll ask, and Brian has mentioned it, is that as you look over this list, if you think of items between now and two weeks from now, when we have our next work session to discuss, please let us know so that we can investigate them. We want to be able, if you've got an idea of something new, maybe looking at our CIP and you say, well, I'd really rather do this out of our CIP with this funding, let us know that, so then we can do the research to determine if it's ARP-eligible or if it needs to be part of that $10 million for the money that we've supplanted. Because that has an impact on what needs to come out in order to consider funding your idea. And so for, you know, give us those ideas, and we'll do the research and provide you an answer as to where it would need to fit in. So we can know, okay, well, that's a nice four million idea, so I guess we've got to remove the courthouse uplift, and if it fits as an ARP-eligible, we can do that.
So if everyone's agreeable, we'll present this plan to the public Monday night and have we'll allow some period of time.
Yep. We will run it similar to how we do public comment. We'll call it public input. They'll have three minutes to provide their their information that they would like to present to us as to their ideas as to how the funding could be used.
And then we'll discuss it again in two weeks at work session. Is that agreeable with the board? Okay.
Great job, Brian.
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you for your time.
Yes, thank you for your hard work.
You've got a lot of good hard work.
All right, the next item on our agenda is All right, the next item on our agenda is, um, a revision to the rules of procedure, Rule 29, which deals with the public comment period. And you have, uh, in front of you the revised, um, recommendation. The, the previous set of rules that we had had things that were not necessary to be in there. There were things that were not in there that should have been in there. Do we wanna, uh, discuss these now? Do you want time to read over them and discuss them later? Or how do you wanna, how do you wanna proceed with this?
Chairman, I'd like a little time to read these over, discuss them.
One of the things, um, we're going to start requiring, um, sign-ups prior to the, the start of the meeting rather than just alter skelter.
We used to, we used to.
This includes, uh, this revised procedure allows for, uh, people to sign up up until one hour prior to the start of the meeting by email and then, um, they can sign up as they arrive. We'll have a sign-up sheet. It will be picked up five minutes before the meeting starts or before the scheduled start of the meeting, let me put it that way. And, uh, if you don't get here and sign up, you have to wait till next time. But there are some other additions too, so what I hear is, Mr. Johnson, what, what I hear you saying is you wanna discuss this at the next work session.
Yes, sir.
How about the rest of the board?
Uh, I'm fine with that as well.
Okay, we will, we will bring this back up, um, at the March 29th work session. Next item on the agenda is a recommendation to move the April 26th work session to, from Tuesday, April 26th to Monday, April 25th. Mr. Trout?
Thank you, it's been brought to my attention that we're gonna have a distinguished visitor, visitor in our county on the 26th. And so in order to allow the opportunity for board members to attend that Lieutenant Governor visit at the school, I'm not sure which school, Commissioner Matthews, but, but there's a...
I should know, but I'm, I'm afraid to say, cause I've got two in my mind that I would say wrong.
So anyway, the key is...
It's Huron Central something, Middle or High, I'm not sure which right now.
So the key is to allow that opportunity to attend and listen to their remarks. Request to move the meeting one day forward to Monday in order to, uh, allow that to occur.
Uh, and since we have noted that this would be a potential voting item, we can go ahead and vote on this today so that, uh, staff has ample time to advertise the change.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I make a motion that we, uh, move the date from Tuesday, April 26th to, for the work session to Monday, April 25th.
Second. I have a motion in the second, actually we have two seconds, thank you gentlemen. Any discussion on this, uh, change? If not, uh, all in favor of this change, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Carry unanimously, Madam Clerk, thank you, uh, board members. And the last item that we, and this was what we added to the agenda. At our last meeting, uh, I guess there was some confusion as to, uh, how we would appraise the, or come up with the value of the Magnolia Building in Dunn. There were, um, there were thoughts that we would do a fee-based appraisal and there were thoughts that we were going to use the appraisal, uh, recently completed by the, the Tax Department. So I said, well, we'll just put it back on the agenda and make sure we got everybody on the same page. So I'm opening this up for discussion, uh, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I think we ought to just use the tax value appraisal. I mean, we paid for it and they're professionals and I think we should use that.
Okay. Any other comments? We have a suggestion that we use the appraisal, uh, that was just recently completed by the Tax Department.
I will, uh, I'll, I'll agree with Mr. Johnson, Commissioner Johnson on that one just because, um, they just finished up with that and it is supposed to be dead on with the market, you know, within a small percent tolerance. So, um, I have faith in the Tax Department, so I say that we go ahead and utilize that appraisal or adjustment that they have. And plus, I mean, it would, in order to do another appraisal, there would be several different ways that we would have to go about it. I mean, not just like a fee, I mean, an actual appraiser will have to use some other form of appraising it, whether or not it's, like I said before, like the gross rental multiplier or something like that. There may be a better way to value the property that I couldn't tell you what the best way to do that would be right now, so.
Okay, any other comments?
No, I agree.
Well, if the consensus of the board is, we will ask Mr. Snow to, uh, use the appraisal recently completed by the Harnett County Tax Department in his conversations with, uh, Mr. Pope, the attorney for the, uh, Crossroads America Alliance as well as the City of Dunn. All right.
Chairman, on, on that point, just so we have it on the record, the 2021 revow value on that property is $1,106,300.
Right. And I think, um, what we discussed last time was, uh, trying to work out some type of a transfer, um, with, if, if the building is sold at a later date or, uh, destroyed by a natural disaster, the, the proceeds would come back to Harnett County at that point. Anyone have any other understanding or questions about that? All right.
We'll go forward and report back to you.
Thank you, sir. All right, Mr. Trout, the county manager should report.
I have nothing additional today.
I've got one question, item six on the proposed agenda.
Say that again.
Item six on the proposed agenda. I guess Kimberly's not here, so we can't talk about that today.
Oh, yeah, we'll need to move the public hearings on the UDOs out to refer to.
Pardon?
The item six on the proposed.
Yeah, considered the, uh, request to approve the contract with the audit firm Martin Starnson Associates.
No, I had not seen that one, that must have got added while I was out, so.
Is that timed, Senator?
What? Okay. I'll, I'll have to bring myself up to date on that one, I was, I haven't heard while I was out and not see that on the new agenda.
Can we tentatively move it to the 29th work session?
I'm not sure on the timing, but we'll, probably, I don't think it should be an issue. We'll, we'll, we'll make sure, if there's an issue, I'll let you know, but we'll attempt, we'll, we'll plan to do that.
All right. All right, anything else, uh, on the manager's, uh, report?
Nothing.
All right, um, we do have a need for a closed session, uh, I think it will be a short one.
Commissioner Westburn, I move that the board go into closed session for the following purposes, to consult with the county's legal counsel in order to reserve the attorney-client privilege concerning the handling of a certain claim and to instruct the county staff concerning the position to be taken by the county in negotiating a proposed contract for the acquisition of real property. This motion is made pursuant to NC General Statute, Section 143-318 dot 11A, 3 and 5.
Second.
Have a motion in second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? We're now in closed session.
The meeting back to order. And I will, if there's no further business, I'll accept the motion to adjourn.
Chairman, I make the motion to adjourn.
Right.
Motion is second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.